All right, evening everyone, thank you for being here tonight. Before we start, I just want to let everyone know trustee Matthews is not feeling well, so she's not going to be able to be in attendance tonight. We will sure as soon recover. First, we're going to tickle to the agenda, any changes to the agenda as presented?
No.
Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second?
Third.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. We have the minutes from the village board meeting, September 12th, 2011. Any errors or omissions? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes. And the second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes from the village board work session, September 19th, 2011. Any errors or omissions? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. We have a letter for alcohol beverage license application regarding Kelly G's. Dear Sir Madam enclosed here within please find community notice with respect to the new application of KJE Enterprises for an on-premise liquor license in connection with the restaurant that we operate at 145 North Church Street, Goshen, New York. If you have any questions regarding the enclosed materials, please let me know. And if there's any comments or questions from the public, they can be directed to New York State Attorney. This is just for our records and our notice. Next, we have a letter from the pancreatic cancer action network. Dear Mayor Kyle Roddy, I am writing on behalf of the pancreatic cancer action network and the estimated 37,660 Americans who will die of pancreatic cancer in 2011, approximately 2,470 of whom live in New York State. In 2011, pancreatic cancer will affect more than 43,030 Americans, 70% of whom will die within one year of their diagnosis, and 94% of whom will die within five years of diagnosis. As a seven-year survivor of the disease, I represent the pancreatic cancer action network as a community representative of the Nodson Valley. There are very few long-term survivors. My survivorship has been a source of information for people of Orange County and the United States. To date, pancreatic cancer is the fourth leading cause of cancer death in the United States, and it is the deadliest, with the lowest survival rate of any major cancers. Furthermore, there has been little improvement in the survival rate over the last 40 years. We need your help to shine a spotlight on this disease and finally make progress developing treatments and early detection tools. By issue in Orange County proclamation supporting the observance of the 20th November 2011 as pancreatic cancer awareness month, you may help us raise awareness in our community. I have attached a draft of the proclamation text review. I'm happy to provide additional official pancreatic cancer action network material, including pancreatic cancer facts and statistics and the National Cancer Institute funding information upon request. We have requested that two original of the proclamation be made available for our records. Please continue with any questions. I look forward to working with you to issue a proclamation on November 20th as pancreatic cancer awareness month and bring much needed attention to this deadly disease. Thank you for your interest in this organization. Sincerely, Ralph Cheney, community representative and survivor. All right, looking for the proclamation for this month. That sounds like a good thing to do. I lay on this, it's obviously a terrible day. Those around us that know people or loved ones that are suffering from this or have suffered with loss, I think it's important that we give those people support. So I'd like to issue this proclamation, unless there's any other comments or questions worth. Okay?
I think that you guys, also on here, it shows that on the 20th, there's a ceremony on the 20th of November that historic track.
Okay.
That accompanies with this proclamation, and I would assume that they're probably going to make official the proclamation.
Right.
That day or something.
Okay, so we can put out some more of the all that information for people to attend. All right, resolution. Declare the month of November pancreatic cancer awareness month in the village of Goshen in the county of Orange in the state of New York. Whereas in 2011, it is estimated 23,030 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, and 37,660 will die from the disease. Whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers and is the fourth leading cause of cancer death in the United States. Whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is usually too late for an optimistic prognosis, and 74% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis, while 94% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. Whereas of all the racial ethnic groups in the United States, African-Americans have the highest incidence rate of pancreatic cancer, between 34 and 70% higher than other groups. Whereas approximately 2,470 deaths will occur in New York in 2011. Whereas there is no cure for pancreatic cancer, and there have been no significant improvements in survival rate in the last 40 years. Whereas the federal government invests equally less money in pancreatic cancer research than it does in any of the other leading cancer killers, and pancreatic cancer research constitutes only approximately 2% of the National Cancer Institute's federal research funding, a figure to love given the severity of the disease, its mortality rate, and how little is known about how to arrest it. And whereas the pancreatic cancer action network is the first and only national patient advocacy organization that serves the pancreatic cancer community in the village of Goshen and the county of Orange in the state of New York and nationwide by focusing its efforts on public policy, research funding, patient services, and public awareness and education related to developing effective treatments and a cure for pancreatic cancer. Whereas the pancreatic cancer action network and its affiliates in the village of Goshen and the county of Orange in the state of New York support those patients in currently battling pancreatic cancer, as well as those who have lost their lives from the disease and are committed to nothing less than a cure. Whereas the good health and well-being of the residents of the village of Goshen and the county of Orange in the state of New York are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and the research into early detection causes and effective treatments. Therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Kyle Roddy designate the month of November 2011 as pancreatic cancer awareness month in the village of Goshen and the county of Orange in the state of New York. I'll ask for a motion on this.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. So as more information comes out about that, if anyone can ask us a notice form? You have an abstract of vouchers here. Bills as examined by members of the board were approved in accordance with abstract 2011-2012 number nine, check numbers 2260 through 2303, and the amount of 208,662.70 cents. And again, these are all numbers and vouchers from Dave and the board that trustees already approved and tied off on. This is more of a formality. Any discussion on this? All right, I'll ask for a motion.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have on the list for Halloween curfew this year. And as the commissioner, do you want to speak on this briefly?
What we do every year, found over the years, it's been an effective tool. Halloween is a fun time of year, but we also find, we all know this from life experience, there's the overnight hours can be a little troubling as a matter of safety, so we've always found this to be a great tool to help keep things under control and make sure everyone enjoys the holiday period of this.
All right, as trustee said, it's nothing new, and I think it's very appropriate and essential to maintain a safe, fun time that weekend. Chief Blas, since you're here, is there anything you wanted to add to that?
No, I'm agreeing. We have done this every year. It's very effective for control, be able to, once the event is concluded, to be able to clear the streets and retain some type of order. So it's very useful. I like to have it in effect and just this ability to control large groups of people in this person.
All right, very good. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion. So moved. And a second? Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Next, please. All right, we have a motion to schedule a public hearing on making a 15-minute parking space on 100 Greenwich Avenue. This was started by a Sunday woman named Rabbit sending the village a letter saying that she had spoken to one of the business owners on Greenwich Ave., and they said it would be beneficial for their business to have a parking spot, a 15-minute parking spot there instead of a metered parking spot. And the board discussed this, they're like, we're blessed, we're set, and we thought that it would be a good thing. Right now, with the businesses that were impacted by Irene, and the aftermath, to be able to help them out a little bit by giving a 15-minute parking spot would be a positive thing. Can I ask for a motion on this?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right. Resolve to schedule a public hearing to consider the adoption of a proposed local law to designate a free 15-minute parking space in front of 100 Greenwich Avenue. Public hearing will be held October 24th, 2011 at 7:30 or as soon after as may be heard in a village hall 276 Main Street, Goshen, New York. All right, we have the motions, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Continue. Next on the list is the hiring of a part-time police officer. This is part of our continued attempts and vigilance to rein in the overtime costs. As we know, looking at the budget and knowing the next year's budgets can be more difficult than this previous year, especially working with the new tax cap, anything that we can do to save costs, to bring down our overtime costs is going to be a positive thing. That was part of the genesis for this, but I'm going to let, again, trustee Charles or Commissioner Lee speak for this briefly.
So it's just a continuation of putting into effect a lot of the good stuff that we got out of the last two-day contract initiation. Last year, overtime was down well over 20%. Is that correct?
Yes.
And this will again help us continue. That's why we're able to budget a lot less this year. Hopefully it will come in.
Close to that.
And again, just a great tool. Helps achieve, I guess, like, sergeant, also more flexibility in filling the unloading gaps and that sort of stuff.
I know that overtime for different officers varies depending on what level they've been here, what step they're on, but could you give a ballpark of what the average saving is compared to a full-time hour of overtime and a part-time?
Say probably fifty to twenty dollars an hour, huh?
Well, yeah, a part-timer gets across twenty dollars an hour, and a overtime full-timer gets anywhere from forty to sixty dollars a night. So that would be the savings.
So it's significantly saving significantly. And is there anything that you'd like to add here?
No, it's just, it is a continuation of a program. We've been successful in reducing overtime for two years. A lot of effort went into negotiating these conditions of using part-timers and having another one will just allow us to expand our use of those conditions which were favorable for reducing overtime.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? All right, hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve. So moved. And a second?
Second.
All right. Edward J. Edwards is hereby appointed part-time police officer for the village of Goshen Police Department at a salary of $20.68 per hour. This appointment is effective on successful completion of her pre-employment physical exam and pre-deployment paperwork. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. And then last, we have a tax refund for Benchmark Ocean Office Associates. This is a settlement that was done through the town's office, mayor attorney, with regard to these tax certs. The village doesn't have an assessor, we contracted the town of Goshen to provide that service, and this is one of the many tax certs that have come in and went to court and through the judge and working with everyone, this is a settlement that goes through each sub-village. Fortunately, it doesn't have a say in this. It's unfortunate, but it's one of those things where everybody's in. Any further discussion on this? All right, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
And a second?
Second.
Whereas Benchmark Goshen Office Associates Limited Partnership has here to forefile the proceeding in the Supreme Court of Orange County pursuant to Article 7 of Real Property Tax Law seeking to contest the assessment imposed on the real property located 1997 Route 17M in the village of Goshen, which property is designated on a tax map as section 116 block 2, lot 142. And whereas the duties of assessing real property in the village of Goshen for purposes of real property taxation are vested with the assessor's office for the town of Goshen, and whereas the town of Goshen and their assessor are here to fore-determine that it is in the best interest of all parties that proceeding commenced by Benchmark Goshen Office Associates Limited Partnership, the settlement compromised. Whereas the village is in receipt of a consent judgment duly signed and approved by the attorneys representing the town of Goshen, the attorneys representing the petitioner, and the office of Orange County Attorney, which consent judgment has been approved by the Honorable Catherine M. Bartlett, Supreme Court Justice. And whereas pursuant to the terms and revisions of said consent judgment, the village is obligated to refund served tax amounts heretofore paid by Benchmark Goshen Office Associates Limited Partnership. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that pursuant to said consent judgment, the village board hereby directs the village treasurer to issue a check in the amount of $21,015.08 and to deliver the same to Benchmark Goshen Office Associates Limited Partnership as provided for in said consent judgment. Roll call though.
Trustee Charles?
Aye.
Trustee Kim?
Aye.
Aye.
One of those things we wish we didn't have to do, but we have no choice. Okay, at that point, I'll look up for trustee Fadniss or trustee Stewart?
Yes, I have the DPW report, and obviously I think everybody can understand this is one of the longer ones that I've seen in the years that I've been on the board due weather conditions that we've had that are unfortunate. Friday, August 26th, crews were preparing for a hurricane Irene by sewer jetting low lying sewer mains. Rio grain was checked before the storm for any debris. Emergency generators were placed in all pump stations. On Sunday, August 28th, crews worked during the hurricane on drainage. The DPW was relocated to the police storage station during the storm because the buildings were flooded to three feet of water. Actually, that area of the village is one of the hardest hits. The entire DPW garage and just around the area were all underwater. During the week of August 29th, crews were cleaning debris which consisted of soil, blood-damaged materials from village homes totaling 93 tons. On Thursday, September 8th, tropical storm Lee flooded the area. Crews continued to work on drainage. The She-Rock and the superintendent slash foreman's office, the break room in the DPW clerk's office have been replaced due to damage from the two storms. Mechanic shop was flooded during this storm and has been thoroughly cleaned and back in service.
That's it. All right, thank you, trustee Charles.
A couple things, want to thank patrolman Ryan Bridge for organizing the most recent car seat installation check. Firehouse also wanted to thank Goshen Fire Department for allowing us to use the house to do that. That was on September 24th, and it'll be another one probably in the next quarter. She seemed to be doing a lot of these ones in order. Also, on September 29th, from 5 to 7, the village of Goshen PBA will be providing a free spaghetti dinner to all Goshen seniors at the Goshen Senior Center on Railroad Avenue. I haven't checked it on my phone. Two joint recreation events coming up. The annual Halloween event will be on Sunday, October 23rd, from 1 to 4. This year, we're actually moving into Slesian for the first time. It's traditionally been at Craigville. And then also on Saturday, November 19th, at 11:00 a.m. at Craigville will be the 5K Turkey Trot. Your honor, I believe that the turkey.
Check approved.
He may not know it, but he deserved it, the nominee for it.
That's it? All right. We'll write it back. Trustee Smith?
Aye.
Okay. I'm going to read the water report, because trustee Matthews is not able to be here tonight. The electrical panel for North Church Street pump station is being replaced, and FEMA has worked with us regarding the damage done to the spillway. And just as that reminded me with the tax cert on the past, trustee Matthews talked about the village potentially getting an assessor to look over that stuff, and she was tasked with doing some research on that to find out if it would be cost-effective. So I'm sure of future meetings, I'll be reporting back to the public the other findings. For the sewer report, the current existing pump stations are both running, but their electrical panels at some point need to be replaced, and several sewer mains have been inspected and TV checked for info study. Outside of that, a week and a half ago, myself and some of the village's architects went to a meeting with FEMA representatives to start the process. So we've been doing a lot of research on that, having a lot of meetings, documenting all the things at the village. It's going to be replaced if I totally recoup those funds for FEMA. In addition, Superintendent Nusli has also been talking with some FEMA representatives, actually the Army Corps of Engineer, to potentially get any feedback they can provide on our drainage issues for the future, see if there's any services they can offer. So Mike's working very hard on that. Outside of that, this coming, a week from today, is the Pattern for Progress Tax Cap Seminar, that myself and Deputy Mayor Charles will be attending to learn about the tax cap ways to implement and ways to hopefully save costs to come in under that amount. It's going to be challenging, and I think this education and others that will follow will be very helpful. So I'm looking forward to that. I think that's going to be a good event. And I'm also happy to say that tomorrow in Albany is the New York State Economic Development Conference that Governor Cuomo is putting together with all the regional councils for the state, getting together, President Clinton is actually the keynote speaker to talk about economic development. And I'm not on one of the regional councils, so I'm not on the list, but they had a lottery online, and I actually put my name in. I was fortunate enough to be selected, so I'll be attending that. So I'm looking forward. Business and private sector leaders from across the state, and I think it's going to be a good event, hopefully can help us spur economic development here in Allen. So outside of that, we'll open up for sense of comments.
If nobody else has, you know, I don't think, I'd like to defer to anybody else. Following last week's meeting, where Mr. Hipoc asked if the village had identified any sources in flooding, any causality, and received the answer of 11 inches of rain, and trustee Smith contention that every village around here, every community has had flooding, this was an outlier storm. As you know, I expressed my opinion quite freely that that was not the case, and I believe that the village really needs to look at why this flooding happened. So I went home and I did a little rough research. I urge you not to take my word for it, go do your own, talk to people who are experts within the community, people you know best, you know, educated meteorologists, a little researchers. But I went to the National Hurricane Center site and did a little Googling around, remember Google search, right? And came up with a list of hurricanes going back, I actually went back to the beginning of the 1900s, but just to peruse them. And then, starting in 1938, there was a major hurricane which was unnamed, which has become notorious, it's referred to as the Long Island Express, which just missed us. There was a high-pressure area to our west that kept it channeled away, it slammed right into Long Island and Connecticut, did major amounts of damage, major amounts of damage, wiped out practically everything on the waterfront and on sound on the coast of Connecticut, and then moved on up. But we just missed the bullet on that one. It was a major storm in '44. In 1950 and '51, there was Hurricane Dog and Hurricane Abel. Dog had four to five inches of rain. I wasn't able to find, Abel was '52, I wasn't able to find a rain figure on that. In '54, there were back-to-back hurricanes, Carol and Edna. Carol hit on August 31st, was category three storm when it hit Long Island, and it delivered five inches of rain. Edna, right on its tail on September 11th, hit land to take caught, but in the process dumped on the region about eight inches of rain. Following on that, that same year, '54, there was Hurricane Hazel, which hit October 15th and delivered over 10 inches of rain. In '55, there were another back-to-back set of hurricanes, Connie and Diane. Connie hit on August 12th, category three hitting North Carolina, delivering four to eight inches of rain, turned to the northwest. So it ended up petering out over the north country rather than going up the coast, but delivered a substantial amount of rain. And then right on the back of that, on the 19th, was Hurricane Diane coming ashore at Long Island, delivered over 20 inches of rain. Depending on where you were, 10 to 20 inches, 184 flood deaths, flood deaths. And in non-adjusted dollars, $832 million of damage. In 1960, there was Hurricane Dog, hit June 12th. Wind was predominant damage from that storm, delivered eight inches of rain. In '61, Hurricane Esther, hit September 21st to 26th, eight inches of rain. In '62 also, in October 6th through 8th, there was Hurricane Daisy, 14 inches of rain. In '72, Hurricane Agnes hit June 23rd to 25th. It was a slow hurricane, there was a large low that kept it from progressing. It dumped 14 to 19 inches of rain. On its back, well, it actually separated for a bit, and it hit September 2nd through 4th with Hurricane, Hurricane Carrie, also in '72, delivered 12 inches of rain. In '85, it was Hurricane Gloria, hit September 26th to 27th, delivered eight inches of rain. In '91, there was Hurricane Bob, hit August 18th through 19th, delivered eight to nine inches of rain. And in '96, there was Hurricane Lily or Leely, which has also been nicknamed the '96 floods, delivered 12 to 20 inches of rain, and then, and that was in October, also a slow-moving storm, 21st to 24th. And it's called the '96 flood, differentiated from a storm that hit in '98, which is, has been nicknamed the '98 floods. So the point that I made last week, I reiterate again, this was a bad storm. By long-term historical standards, this was not an outlier. And the job that is done here is looking to the future, obviously dealing with the immediate, but looking to the future. And I implore you to, I used the word leadership last week twice. What needs to be done is to deal with this situation, at least with a factor of two, not just a hundred-year storm, but to accommodate whatever might come along with a surplus, the way things are engineered, to allow for the extraordinary. Because had the railroad bed not been a dividing berm, we would have had floods at what's now the Heritage Trail, we would have had floods all the way from Church Park all the way out to Healy's. The only thing that separated that was this, the long arc of the old railroad road there. And it's going to happen again. There's no place for this water to go. There's really no DEC reason not to dredge, because the Rio is not a natural stream, it's an engineered stream at this point. You know, it is our storm control, storm drainage, both on the east end by the county building and the west branch that comes in from the Connecticut Road. And in partnership with that 100-acre mile track. Please, do something about it. It's going to go far too.
Well, thank you very much. It's really, did a lot of research, put a lot of time into all the figures and facts there, and just to reiterate, you know, it's not, this village board and this village staff does not have lighters on to the problems that are in my face. You know, I can't speak as an un-engineer without, you know, having done the studies that we're going to look into doing about what was the exact cause of different flooding in different areas, because there was flooding on a number of streets. A lot of that came out of the Rio, but it wouldn't be rational for me to say, I can say without equivocation to that. But we've been having a lot of conversations internally with village engineer, village attorney, head of the DPW, chief of police, on all these different things, and what can be done in the short term to make the long term a better picture than that. Because ideally, in extreme weather, and I think that it's fair to say that Hurricane Irene and the preceding leave was extreme weather, we need to know what we can do with limited funds, but how can we best apply the limited funds we do have to improve the situation long term? And I think that the first step is what we're doing, and it's having conversations with FEMA about getting the most immediate funding that we can from the federal government for things, because that's FEMA's role, is to provide that relief. So we're looking into that, and we're having the preliminary conversations with the Army Corps of Engineers, that Superintendent Nusli's been doing. We're talking to our attorney, and by just recently hiring our grant writer, we're hoping to put some grant applications in by the October 31st deadline for the consolidated funding application, and hopefully that will generate some revenue. And there's no guarantee, but we're not going to get grants without applying for them. And right now, we're in the research phase in all this. So I think that your point is well taken. You know, I can't comment on the specific engineering aspects, but I can say with certainty that the support is taking the challenges that we're facing very seriously, and that we're going to continue to do research. And as we determine a more coherent strategy for moving things forward, we'll be happy to discuss that in future meetings.
Could you comment on the removal of the contaminated waste and the consent order?
As far as I understand, things haven't changed from the last time that we talked about it. Dave, is there, I believe that we're still moving dirt right now and nothing's-
That's correct. We are moving dirt, and we have had, I've had more communication with the attorney general's office.
Can you characterize it?
Just a continuation of the conversation we've been having for, in a period of time.
Are we any closer to a consent order per se? And knowing what the ultimate funds will be?
Are-
Uh, are, are we closer to, I, I, I can't speak to the attorney general, so I don't know, I don't understand. My objective from day one has been to make sure we have the dirt pile removed, um, and, and we should be about at the 80% mark, um, as we sit here tonight. But in less than a year, it's a substantial, uh, amount of the dirt pile has been, uh, removed. In terms of the bypass that DEC wants us to construct, that's been designed, it's been approved, it's out the bid, the bid opening is next week, uh, that's kind of a long way to, uh, addressing the problems that DEC wanted us to address in the short term. So, uh, I think as I've repeated several times over the course of a number of years we've had this conversation, my objective and the village's objective is to fix the problem. Um, the consent order, whatever fines are going to be imposed, there will be fines imposed, we'll take care of themselves in due time. But we need to, uh, focus our efforts and our resources on fixing the problems, and that's what we're doing.
This is the first time that I've heard this mentioned, uh, did, did I understand from what you just said that the, uh, idea of, uh, replacing the, uh, nexus where the three pipes come together came from the DEC? Was that, did they're bringing that to us?
Pardon me, that's was our solution.
No, we, our suggestion to them, which they heartily endorsed.
It's part of the continuing conversation that our engineers and attorney have been having with the AG and the...
That, that was my impression, but I was just...
Right, that's...
No, that's just one stage in our infrastructure improvement plan that is going to be carried out in the most immediate time.
Any further sense of comments? Yes, Phil?
Uh, did you find anything out? Uh, regarding two weeks ago, there were, uh, some folks that came here from menacing trail and complained about a 12-inch culvert pipe that had been cut across the street from the village side to the town side and then discharging in the front yard of, uh, some town citizens. I was curious what the village, uh, might have found out about that, or any conclusions you find appropriate?
We investigated, investigated, and all of the investigation, what it concluded was what we had been told by our consultants and staff in the past, which is that there was, uh, a culvert there in the past, and that culvert was not working properly, so it was replaced with a newer.
Was it crushed? Was it the old one?
I, I don't know.
It was a, a corrugated metal pipe that had been there for a number of years, and I didn't see it until after it was removed, but it was in poor condition.
Crushed, what'd you say?
I think more rusted and, and rotted than crushed, but I think there probably were areas where it had been compromised from, uh, from traffic on the road, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I'm, I'm always learning something new at these meetings, and I'm just, uh, curious with, without any legal knowledge, uh, on my part, uh, what the legalities are of shutting runoff of the private property?
It's not one of the speed... Well, it's not being shut, it, it's a low point in the road, the water's going where it's always going, uh, the pipe allows it to go under the road instead of over the road. I don't mean to be flippant of that, but that's essentially, and it goes into a wet road, which water often goes into.
Any further sense of comments?
If I may just follow up on that, is, uh, is that sewer that was, uh, discharging near the pump station and running into that storm drain and then across the street into their property, is that a fairly often occurrence, or would you say that that's never happened before? Is that a first time discharge there?
I can't, I don't, I know, I couldn't say it was the first time, but I'm not aware of it ever happening before, and I've only been here for maybe, uh, three years, and in my state it hasn't happened before, so I think it was a result of the storm.
That might explain why they noticed it.
Well, the whole area was inundated, um, so, um, it could have been yet.
Thank you.
All right, the last promotion, enjoy. Second. So all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, I will leave, goodnight.